Good evening, everyone. We did start our meeting downstairs. We had a meeting with the union, so we -- our call to order has been completed. We are going to move on to -- excuse me. I don't have the second page of an agenda. There we go. I'm going to just do it from the superintendent. Thank you. Okay. This evening, we do have recognitions. Dr. Freitas.
We're starting with the superintendent, thank you.
Yeah. And I have one recognition tonight. November 15th, 2023 is School Board Member Day. So I just wanted to take a minute to recognize the Board of Education. We have a dedicated group of volunteers that serve on our District 208 Board of Education, who generously give their time and expertise to help make Riverside Brookfield High School an exemplary school. And on behalf of the RB community, I would like to recognize and thank Mr. Bill Durkin, Ms. Lorenagaska, Ms. Laura Horuska, Ms. Carolyn Locke, Mr. Nick Novak, Mr. Ryan Van Horse, and Ms. Deanna Zales. So please help me give a round of applause.
Are there any other recognitions this evening?
Yes, we have. It's still going to be T to recognize.
Thank you.
Good evening, Alabama Board Members and Dr. Stinkas Superintendent. These are the recognitions. A 2023 RB graduate, his artwork has been chosen by the College Board for inclusion in the 2023 APR and Design Digital Exhibit. If you go online to the AP College Board Art Exhibit, you'll be able to see the student's work. The world will be able to see RB alumni. This year's exhibit features exceptional quality student artwork, representing a rich tapestry of ideas, artistic styles, materials, and processes that conceptualize and manifest these works of art and design. This student is currently a freshman at the School of the Art Institute of Chicago and earned scholarship to attend the School of Art Institute of Chicago, based on the incredible work he made for his AP Studio Art 3D portfolio in Ms. Suzanne Zimmerman's class last year. The APR and Design Digital Exhibit is scheduled for publication on December 1st of 2033. We would like to congratulate Christian Varela. Unfortunately, Christian, I believe, is not here. We hope everything's okay, but his work and his legacy will live on. He has made our community very proud. Again, December 1st, watch out for his work. The whole world will have access in the digital online portfolio. Now on to recognize our fantastic musicians. Congratulations to the following RB students selected for the Illinois Music Education Association District One Senior Band, Senior Orchestra, Senior Choir, and Vocal Jazz Ensembles. Thousands of students participated in an audition process to be chosen, and those selected will spend a day collaborating with conductors in large ensembles, resulting in several festival performances. The District One Jazz Festival was on Saturday, November 1st, at Homewood-Flosmore High School, and the Senior Festival will be Saturday, November 18th, at Humphreys University. Students, when you hear your name, please come on up. The selected students are Senior Choir Jack Adams. Congratulations, superstar. Adeline Bloomgrim. Lily Berkowitz. Jan Decker. Congratulations, superstar. Josh Delacruz. Ian DeMano. Angelina Figaroa. Congratulations. Victoria Gentio. Congratulations. Bennett Janunes. Congratulations, proud of you. Caroline Moran. Caroline Strube. Rachel Watson. Congratulations, Rachel. Iris Williams. Benjamin Bushel. Congratulations. Hayden Clark. Congratulations. Lucas Carusa. I will definitely hear your name, because a lot of guys qualify for several awards. Just stay up there, okay? For vocal jazz, Lily Berkowitz. Ian DeMano. Victoria Gentio. Bennett Janunes. And Iris Williams. For Senior Orchestra, we have Emily Bartman. Congratulations, young lady. Grayson Geiger. Patrick Hart. Congratulations. Dane Olsen. Congratulations. Greta Stambutit. William Muggins. And for Senior Band, we have Tabitha Rowia. Congratulations.
This is going to be fun to organize.
Come back here, Kylie, if you need to step behind the tables. By invitation. By invitation. Looks like a charade, but it's not.
All right. I'll take it from you. Okay. Three, two, one. All right, perfect. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I do want to recognize key individuals that helped make this happen. I would like to recognize our Fine Music Department, Mr. Loeb, Ms. Batana. Music, you know, if you look, I don't know if any of our music teachers have any words to say to students or anybody. I don't know if you guys have any words, you know? No. Again, teachers, thank you for your work. I'm really proud to work with you all. Thank you. I do, I believe I saw my art teacher here, Ms. Zimmerman, if you're here, please come on up. She supported and inspired Christian Varela's work. Can we give it up for one of our teachers? Do you have a few words about Christian's work and his special accomplishments? I don't get any words. Please.
Thank you for recognizing me and, of course, for recognizing Christian. He is, I sent a message today. I was like, "Christian, aren't you going to be there?" You know, my little artist, you just never know. But he wanted to be, but he's got work to do. And I was like, "Well, go do what you know how to do so well." And I didn't say this, but I should have. We'll see that on the walls in the museum someday, because this kid's good. He's the best sculptor I taught in two decades of teaching. So it's pretty rewarding to see him recognized in many different capacities. But being one of 50 top portfolios out of 75,000 in the country is pretty remarkable.
And this concludes our recognition.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas, and thank you, everyone.
Students, this is a good time, unless you want to stay.
It's normally not this warm in here. We'll move on to visitor statements in one second after the room clears. Visitor statements this evening, someone here? Ms. Aska, please come on up, introduce yourself. I do have a short statement to read, either chair. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor statements are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent. So without further ado.
I will be brief.
Okay.
My name is Aberdeen Marsh Aska. I know some of you, I do not know others of you, I'm pleased to meet you. I am a trustee with the Village of Riverside, and I am also the Chair of Riverside's effort in the Cross-Community Climate Collaborative. You should have received an email with some materials, which I've also put at your places this evening. Fifteen of our West Cook County area municipalities, including Brookfield and North Riverside, along with Riverside, have joined in a memorandum of understanding to essentially achieve a very ambitious goal by 2050, which is the elimination of greenhouse gas emissions, and also to build resilience in our communities in an equitable manner. So those three principles sort of drive the Cross-Community Climate Collaborative's mission. Each community is being supported by grant-funded consultants to develop their own climate action and resilience plans that are reflective of their communities. Where Riverside is in this process is, starting in January of 2023, we began outreach and engagement with our community members, inviting them to envision what Riverside would look like in 2050 and how those goals might be achieved. You know, we received a lot of open-ended responses, hundreds and hundreds of ideas from the community about how to achieve these goals. And there was a process where they, you know, we sifted through the top ideas in terms of feasibility. We did subsequent follow-up surveys and then performed gap analyses, where we looked at Riverside's assets and vulnerabilities and measured them against the ideas that were generated by the community and said, "Okay, let's look at some other established plans. What are we missing? What needs to be supplemented?" And we've done that. And now we have a brief summary of 32 potential initiatives that would form the framework for our Climate Action and Resilience Plan. And here is where we engage all the major stakeholders. Here is where we say to anyone who could be a potential implementer of one of these plans, and that includes, you know, a piece of these plans, that includes all of our taxing bodies, "We're reaching out to you right now for your feedback on these preliminary suggestions." And if it is at all possible to think about your long-term planning process and things from both an operational standpoint and from a curriculum development standpoint, about how are we going to achieve these, you know, goals in terms of the climate, but also prepare our students for a world in which more technical professions are in need of trained personnel to repair solar panels and EV charging stations and go into STEM and make that next great, you know, development. So you're already doing amazing things when it comes to the equity piece. I know you've been working very hard on it over this last year.
Thirty seconds, you got to wrap up.
Okay. I will wrap it up. But please, we have an online form where you can submit your questions, your feedback, and ideas for how we can modify these proposals and eventually turn it into a plan that we can put out to the broader community. So I appreciate your input and look forward.
Thank you, trustee Aska. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else here for public comment this evening? I see familiar faces, but I think you're at a different point in the agenda. Just looking around, making sure. Okay. Student Association, we have on the agenda, but --
We have one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please come forward. Just come on, take a seat, and tell us your name.
Hi, my name is Victoria Gentila. I am the Choir Board and Triumph Board President here at RB, and I'm just here to let you guys know what the music program has been up to these past few weeks and just give you guys some updates. So a few weeks ago, our music instructors, Ms. Batana, Mr. Baum, and Mr. Loeb, went to Nutria High School to observe their High Five Choir, which for us would be equivalent to the Bulldog Buddy Choir if it runs next year. And the choir specifically has been taking the information that they've learned as an opportunity to connect with best buddies here at RB to try and promote the possibility of the choir next year. Second, we did some recognitions for the district events that we had last week, and next week is our Senior Chorus District, and it's also the same event that the 910 District will be held at, which is kind of like the same event, but for underclassmen mostly, or people who wanted to attend the event but didn't necessarily make the certain list that it was specified for. Next up, our Veterans Day Performance Assembly was last Friday. It was such a beautiful assembly. The choir program and wind ensemble band performed, and it was just so gorgeous. It went so great this year, actually, it was really smooth, and I think everyone felt great about it. I heard a lot of good feedback from, like, performers and the audience, and it just went really well. I think it was a great assembly. Next up, the jazz band and ensembles are getting ready for their next concert on November 30th at Hauser. So it was postponed, but it should be super good, so I'm super excited. Oh, and the whole music program is getting ready for our holiday concert. It's this huge two-day concert that we have, and it's super gorgeous and amazing, and everyone has so many songs. I know I have so much music I have to learn, and I'm so excited. And next, our Magicals Choir is getting ready for some gigs we have out in the Brookfield and Riverside communities, which includes singing at Cantata or at just caroling events out in Brookfield in front of Essie Gross and Eight Circle or Eight Corners, and in Riverside by the water tower and the train station. Last year, we did it in front of Gears to You, and it was just such a great, like, event. It was super cute. And yeah, this year, I think we're doing a lot more, like, community events, and yeah, it's just how we try to stay involved. It's the Honors Class Magicals, it's the Honors Choir, so we try to stay more involved in the community. And yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good job. Thanks.
Any additional visitor comments? So the next part of our agenda is the presentation from our RBHS groups, their annual presentations. Why don't we do these in the order? I think we had some of the information in our packet beforehand. I think the order we see them in our packet is boosters, sports boosters, if they could come on up. And just for your group and everyone else, I believe the administration gave you the Board policy, what to expect, looking for status update on those items that the Board looks for. You could just highlight those in your presentation. We would appreciate it, and I'll turn it over to you. So thank you.
Okay, awesome. Hi, everyone. I'm Jenny Royer. I am currently serving my second term as RB Sports Boosters President. For those of you who don't know me, I have a 2019 graduate of RB, Elliot, a very recent 2023 graduate, Sam, and Baby Royer is currently a sophomore, graduating in 2026. So I don't know, in 2027, I don't know what I'll possibly do with all of my time. All right, so I'm just going to hit the points that were, you know, outlined to present. The officers for this school year for boosters are myself, president, Kristin Hoyd, and Julie Novak, our vice presidents, Amy Raymond is secretary, and Michelle Ruska is treasurer. Summary of our financials appears in our annual report that is on our website, rbssportsboosters.com. Just as a quick highlight, last year, we dispersed just over $30,000 in funding requests. The majority of those, more than $25,000, were spent on much-needed uniform updates and things like warm-ups. And then in addition to that, we were extremely proud and really delighted to also give out $11,000 in scholarships to graduating Bulldog student athletes, and we hope to always be able to do as much as we possibly can each year with that. Since I have the floor, I also want to just highlight that our 2023 Boosters of the Year were Becky Kusurik and Michelle Ruska. They put in hundreds and hundreds of hours, so they deserve that shout-out. With respect to number seven in Policy 890, I can confirm that RB Sports Boosters maintains a public website, our financials are posted there, and we are current on our tax-exempt status. Finally, you asked if there were any challenges that the organization faced that maybe, you know, this group or anyone listening could possibly help with. I will say that I want to give a quick shout-out to Kylie. I'm not sure where Kylie was. She's been very willing to help with parent outreach, and I can see already that it's starting to make a difference, and we're really excited about that, because last year, you know, we struggled to get volunteers. I'm a scientist, I'm a data person, so, you know, I have to just quickly read these numbers. There were close to 1,000 volunteer hours put in for sports boosters last year. That's mainly time and concessions. That's why we can have the bank account that we do. But nearly half, 455 of those hours, were worked by only nine people, and most of those were the five people on the board. So it's a, you know, I say that in part because the Board really deserves a lot of recognition for the, like, blood, sweat, and tears that go into raising money, but also that we need more parent engagement. I think a lot of the parent organizations will say that it's been a little bit of a struggle coming out of the pandemic, but Kylie's efforts have been helping, and I definitely, you know, recommend to try to, you know, leverage her generosity and help whenever possible, because we can already see it's making a difference for this year. And then the other thing, I flagged this to Dr. Freitas, is we've been receiving feedback that it would be really helpful if more of our communications, because some of these communications go just to boosters, some of it go to the full, you know, parent distribution list at RB. If more of those communications, or at least some of those communications, could be in both English and Spanish, we don't have a way to resource that. So if that's something that, you know, could be, you know, something that could be a resource to us, you know, not every time, but maybe on some key communications throughout the year, we definitely want to make sure that we're able to reach every family that we can. And that was some important feedback that I felt like I wanted to share with you.
Awesome.
Yeah, and that's it.
Any questions from the Board?
I do actually have one. I was on your website, and I saw that everybody on the Board is, except for one, is on their second year. Like, you have a two-year limit, like, you can only do it two years in a row.
So the president has a term limit, so this is the last time that I can serve as president. The treasurer actually has to serve two terms.
But the other ones are also on their second. Are they? I just worry about continuity and people in the wings.
Yeah, and, you know, we worry about that, too. So, you know, there's not a formal system in place for us to try to, you know, line up replacements, but we are constantly trying to engage people into committees, because I feel like that's sort of a really helpful first step to sort of ultimately rising up to the Board. And we have a lot of, you know, really great, very involved parents.
Okay.
So I think we should be okay, but yeah, definitely on our minds, too.
Any questions from here?
Thank you so much.
Thanks for all the interest.
I think the next group we had received information from was the Educational Foundation. Mr. Monti.
Good evening. I have a more update. Things are slow with your statements, so this is the October, what we've outlined.
Okay, thank you.
Most up to date. Thank you very much. So again, I'm Dave Monti of the Science Department. I've been involved with the RBF for over 30 years, and I've recently became the president a couple of years ago, and so, and I'm retiring in a year and a half, so yeah, so that's one of our concerns, is who's going to take over, you know, who's going to succeed me as president? So the first thing, so we, all the financials are there, we have our annual benefit. This year, we're actually having two. So we have a magic show coming up this Friday with an alumni, Trent Ketchmark, who's a professional magician. I watched him do his magic shows when he was a freshman here at RB, and now he's a professional. He plays Vegas, he does all the college circuit. So he's been wanting to come back for a while and do a fundraiser for the foundation, so we're very, very happy. So that's this Friday. And then we have our annual, we don't call it the Telethon anymore, because times have changed, so we're just calling it our annual event. So that's on March 16th of 2024, and so that will be a raffle again, like we've done the last four years, and also entertainment. So you can see on number three, ticket sales have gone down. Again, you know, the economy is not as strong as it's been, but we got more donations from corporate sponsors, and we also had free entertainment last year. The year before, because of COVID, we were trying to entice entertainment, so we were paying for the entertainment, but we had an incredible Leonard Skinner tribute band. If you close your eyes, it was Leonard Skinner. That's how good they are, and they play all over the Midwest. I've seen them play a couple of times. Since then, they were the nicest people, and so they donated their time and their talent. So that was wonderful. So even though we sold 200 tickets less than we did the year before, we still made the same amount of money through those extra donations. And then, you know, the big thing since I've taken over has been, we're really trying to maximize the money given out. So the last three years, we've raised $39,900, and we've given away $40,600. So we're trying to really push that every penny that comes in is going back out. In the past, we didn't fully fund grants, you know, kids would request, and we'd give them half of it or a third of it, depending on how big it is. Now we're pretty much fully funding everybody. So that's kind of been a little bit of a change philosophically. Everything is up to date on our website, all the meeting agendas, meeting minutes, financial reports. I want to thank Bill Durkin. He was a big help last February with getting our change in our insurance. For many years, we had the wrong insurance, and nobody, I think Kristin was the one who finally caught it, that we had the wrong insurance, and so we had to change everything. And so Bill was a big help. And so Bill was a big help and the Foundation's very grateful for his assistance in that change. Our meetings are still usually the third Monday of the month. Sometimes it changes based on schedules. And we're, we're an unusual situation because we don't have a membership like the PTO and the Sports Boosters. So that, so again, it makes it a little bit harder in terms of getting volunteers, in terms of getting people to stand up, step up. We do have term limits, but we kind of turn our eye away from it because we need people to keep doing the job that they're doing. And so, but it's something that's on our radar that we're working at. We're trying to recruit a few people in-house to replace me, to replace Patty Sarkady, to replace Sarah Johnson, because Sarah's going to be retiring in a couple of years. So again, just to get that continuity. And then the last thing, if you, on the agenda, Kylie's been a big help. We've really reached out to her and just being more visible. So this was the first year we ever did residency. And so that was a lot of fun, actually. And so we, again, getting our name out there, getting our face out there. We worked the alumni homecoming and that was a great, great event. And I know Dr. Skinkis got a really wonderful letter from the Class of 68. And he lived right across the street. It's called Sparrow Island. That was, Le Sparrow Island was his house, that house right across the street. So we just had a lot of fun, my wife and I, with the Class of 68. And then we also have a big, we've got a lot of leftover things from the telethons. If you know Gary Prokes, Gary Prokes was great at acquiring things. So we have closets full of things. And so we're working with the La Grange Park Antique Mall. It's a mom whose kids have gone through RB, who I coached and I taught. And so we're working with them about doing a pop-up and trying to get some of these things sold and, again, raise some more money for the foundation and get rid of these things and make room for other things. So, so a lot on our plate. We're very busy, but we're really looking forward to Friday because I think it's going to be a really great event. So far, we've got about 130 reservations for tickets. And I think it'll pick up even more these last couple of days.
Good job, Jay.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments from anyone? Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. I know you said the 501(c)(3) is updated. Just if you could, you update the letter on the website because I think it's an older letter.
Okay, yes, I'll look into that. Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on, music, music and theater? Apologies, you guys didn't get this sooner.
Thank you.
Is it a new logo, too?
Oh, yes. We are very professional over here now.
Thank you.
So I'm Lisa Janunis, President of Music and Theater Sponsors. This is Liz Bouchio. She is one of our committee heads for the Advocacy Committee. And she's just helping me go through our report for you guys. Our officers for this year are myself, President. Ann Kissel is our VP of Music. Amy Moran is our VP of Theater. Kirsten Bell is our Treasurer and Maggie White is our Secretary. Those, the two Vice Presidents are new this year. We did a big reorganization over the last spring where we incorporated music. So now we have two VPs, one of Music and one of Theater. So that's a change. Our current membership is 126 members representing 96 students. In accordance with the policy, we do have a new website. It's rbhsmusicandtheater.org. We spent a lot of time over the summer really getting that into shape because we had a very like basic website before. But now we have a new platform that allows us to send out emails to our membership, keep a current calendar, you know, post a lot of information for our membership. So it's all in one place, volunteer opportunities, and it's all up to date. We are up to date with all of our minutes and agendas. We did notice, we do, we are current with our 501(c)(3) status, but I don't think the certificate is up on the website. So we will, we will put that up there. We have, I think I forwarded it to you earlier today.
That's fine.
But yeah, we do have that and insurance as well.
Perfect.
So for the financial summary, last year we had a total of 81 members, a starting balance of $827, which was a little low. But, you know, our ending balance was 1,872. Last year was a tough year for us, kind of coming out of COVID. Really worked hard to get our membership up this coming year. So we're in much better shape for this fiscally, this 2023 and 2024 school year. We restructured our budget so we can include both theater and music. And we actually have a new seasonal sponsorship opportunities that we've been working with the businesses to represent, or I mean, to provide funds for us throughout the whole school year so they can advertise in our theater programs, our music programs and our spring musical program. So that's been a big push for us to have that stable income so we don't run out at the end of the year. We also have reorganized a lot of our committees. So we have a future Bulldog Committee, which is one of our strongest and probably focused area because we're really trying to build our program back with enrollment numbers, working with the feeder schools to really drum up support for our music and band orchestra theater program. So we also have the Board of Advocacy Committee, which Liz is a part of, and Volunteer Appreciation. So we feel pretty good about our board now being really strong and very active. Our membership is very active. I know that Jenny talked about the trouble of getting people to volunteer, but I think it's just like reaching out personally to people and say, hey, you know, we need your help. And a lot of people just step up. So we've been working really hard on that and it seems to be paying off.
Want to go through the accomplishments?
Uh, sure.
Okay. So we talked about the first one already. We took a trip to Disney World last year and a big shout out to Dr. Freitas for surprising everybody by attending the trip with the kids.
And live streaming.
Yes, and I got to watch vicariously. It was awesome. And we partnered with Sports Boosters. Thank you so much, Jenny, for all of the help there. We were able to fund 100% of the drum majors training camp and Mace Clinic, is that right? Over the summer, that was $1,780. We also were able to fund the Apollo Awards that awards exemplary seniors in the music department. Awarded $2,000 in music scholarships, including funding for students that want to switch to a new instrument. And we educated ourselves on high school music programs in the surrounding communities and learned a lot about how they went about recovering from COVID. Then we shared that knowledge, as you all know, with all of you guys and advocated for the retention of the three music teachers. And in doing so, raising awareness for the importance of teacher retention to ensure continuity of music education and the significance of the student-teacher relationship, as well as the learning outcomes with appropriate class sizes and music ensembles and keeping students together by level, by separating the jazz band. All kinds of great things came out of that. So we appreciate the partnership there. And our music and theater sponsors' social media accounts were combined and we have 800 followers and counting. So discussing some of the challenges that we faced throughout the year. The communication lines between the district administration staff and music sponsors were fragmented last year. And we were all, as you know, caught off guard about what was happening with the teachers. That has improved so much and we're very grateful for that. Part of the committee that I'm part of, the advocacy, is to attend the school board meetings, update you if we have anything that we want to share in between these opportunities to speak to you formally. And so that's that. Recruitment, Lisa touched on this with the feeder schools. We brought back the Junior High Music Festival and the All Around RB Events. And we're going to continue to explore ways to reach younger students and other feeder schools, maybe the parochial or the private schools and even the elementary schools, get them really jazzed and excited. Let them see what happens in the high school and have them, you know, look forward to that as they move through their education in later grade school, taking instruments, middle school, and then coming to high school, having something to look forward to. Our music department trip that's coming up. Something announced to them yet? Something announced. Mum's word. The curriculum guide, we had noticed a mistake in one of the classes in the curriculum guide and we brought it to Kylie Lindquist's attention and she got it handled for us within days. And it all got fixed and everything is perfect. So we want to make sure that that's a priority moving forward, that we have the correct descriptions for classes. Course selection. We would really appreciate being able to work with the RB counselors to inform students that want to enroll in multiple music classes how to navigate the enrollment process, including summer school options for graduation required classes. You know, maybe there'd be the possibility in the future. I believe health and government are offered, but maybe an intensive language could be offered. I don't know, I'm just spitballing here. But maybe some of these required courses could be offered in summer school so that kids would have more room in their schedule for doubling up on music or taking a fine arts with their music and get some more classes that they might really want to take that they just don't have the space for. Final thing I want to touch on is AP Music Theory. You guys know this runs every other year and has traditionally. So it's also not offered to sophomores and it's really difficult to fit in to junior schedule. My son's one of the kids who wants to take it. He's a sophomore this year when it's being offered, or no, I'm sorry, it's not offered this year. Next year, he'll be a junior. He's not going to be able to fit it in next year. He's going to have like three or four AP already. He'd like to take it to senior year, but it's not going to be offered as the schedule is now. We'd really like to see if there's a way we can work at building excitement for the class and getting the interest there so this can be an annual offering. And we thank you very much for your partnership and your time.
Thank you.
Any comments from the board? We left looking right? No?
Keep working with the feeder schools and the elementary schools.
We are.
We're on it.
Thank you guys for all you did.
A short shout out to, A Christmas Carol was great. It's not.
And thank you, we saw several board members there. Thank you for coming.
Yes.
I was there the day the fire alarm did not go off.
How many nights did it go off?
Friday was the best. Friday was the big crumble, right?
Yeah. Last but not least, the PTO, Parent Teacher Organization.
Hi, Julie.
Hello.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Julie Lobby. I recognize mostly, there's three new board members since I was last President. I was President in 1819 and 1920 when COVID hit. And this isn't on our report, but as you recall or heard from Dr. Skinkis and Dr. Freitas, our previous President passed away in April unexpectedly. And she wanted a third term. There are two-year term limits for our President and Treasurer. But her first year, it was nothing really because of COVID. So we let her do a third term in a sense, her third year. So some of what you have on your report was done from our Minutes, from our Secretary and from member. I've been on the board for six years now. This is my second term as a President. I have this year and next year. And then I'll have a senior. And I hope to do something, not last year, but not as President. So with that, we have, myself as President this year, we have Courtney Erb, who is the only outgoing member with Linda Sandusky. So Courtney and Erb and Michelle Manos are our first VPs. And Michelle is shadowing Courtney because the website and the communication is a little, takes a little bit more training. Heather DeForti, who was on our board in 1819, 1920, is VP of Membership. Linda Sandusky is our Secretary. And then our new board member is Beatrice Beltran, is our Treasurer. So we do have our website per your Section 8 Policy 8.90. We will put the 501(c)(3) on the website too. We are up to date on our taxes. The financial summary, we do not have fully posted because it was on Cindy's computer. And our Treasurer fell by the wayside last year. So we were doing it in the Minutes and by the, what'd you say, the bank statement? But Dr. Freitas was at the meetings and I was a Treasurer at Blythe and President at Hauser for four years there. So I am totally recreating from scratch and I do have things on there, but we will post the updated ones. I had to do everything over, so we will have the last few years updated. But right now, we, for 2022, 2023, we began with $4,601. We ended with $4,002 and our current balance is $15,000. It will go down to approximately $5,500 at the end of this month. Reason for that is we have some outstanding checks that are going to clear. And we are purchasing final packs for all the students and teachers. So they're going to have a stress ball, a little pause stress ball. And they're going to get to come through the week before finals, come to the cafeteria and make a goodie bag for themselves. So we're going to let them choose because of allergies and all that. But there'll be granola bars, so like a study snack, a study snack pack they're going to have. And so they're going to have that with a stress ball. And then if they need any extra chapstick or any of our freebies, we'll have those available too. And we're going to do that in December. So that'll bring us down to $5,500. We are in good thing because as I said on our highlights, I had a $25,000 anonymous donation that I went and sought after. It originally was at 15 and 20 when I talked to Dr. Skinkis and Dr. Freitas. The gentleman opted to 25. So I took $5,000 and I have $20,000 to use this year and next year. And obviously I will leave the, in my, finally, I will leave enough in there. But as part of the recovery from COVID, because we took a very big hit with COVID, there were still music concerts going on, there were still athletic events, but we really couldn't do any of our normal events. And so our membership got cut in half. We are now back up to 140 and we usually build a little bit up, but we still might have that 200-plus that we were at before COVID. So our goal is to get back up there. We did get to 125 at the end of last year with a lot of people buying senior signs. So I'd say I'd like to see it at 3, 400 and all that. So we're working on that. But that was our biggest thing is that we had a $25,000 pledge. We provided, some of our highlights, we did our welcome back luncheon for the teachers last August and then in May for teacher appreciation, we gave them a taco bar, which was a big hit, well-received. And they had their desserts and salads and fruit also provided by the parents. We had the open house where we always provide snacks as the parents go through and refreshments as they go through their child's schedule. We offered our donation to the Veterans Day. This year we did a little different, which we'll report on next year, but we had decals and other things that the veterans received instead of a monetary donation. We had our biggest thing, Ed, you've seen as you've come through the residency, is that starting in November, December, we thought, how could we make more money? As we were low in there, because we just had our yard signs, our decals and our directory. And this is our directory for this year. We just changed the cover a little bit. But we said, what can we do? So we researched merchandise that we could purchase and sell. And we have mini Bulldogs now, we have graduate Bulldogs, we have duffel bags and string backpacks, pens. So we opted and that is obviously contributing to the income and helping to help us recover from the loss we suffered during COVID. We had our first community service day this past April. First one since 1819 because we didn't have it. It got shut down right before COVID and all that. We couldn't do ours. So our first one back, we had over 100 students. We had five parent volunteers, 10 staff and coach volunteers and four project sites and then a huge amount of Riverside Public Facility workers and aid from anyone else in the village that was available to come and help us. We had a senior awards reception, which we provide on the senior awards and had their buffet out there. And as of right now, we ended with that 125. We have 25 We have 25 staff, so I'm hoping to up that staff, maybe another raffle. Last year we auctioned off a Blackhawks jersey. So this year we had some bags, we made up of goodie bags and gave that out as a thing. So that is the lowdown. That is a synopsis of our 2022, 2022, 2023.
Is there anything the district can be doing to help the PTO kind of get their legs back underneath them with the sudden passing last year, like as with the financials or the tax stuff or you feel you're just, you just need some more time?
I think probably just a matter of me typing it up, I got a little busy since Michael's death, so.
No, well, that's what I'm saying, if there's anything that the district can do to help you out.
No, I think it's just me sitting in front of the computer and I've done some of it, but we just found out that PTO is going to be offered a financial kit on our membership toolkit with our membership and we kind of are all our financials on one instead of doing like QuickBooks and something else. So I'm going to, I have a basics and then I'm going to get that and we're going to combine it. So everything will be in one place and all that, so.
Perfect.
But I do appreciate the offer, I will let you know though and I'll keep in touch with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, all you do.
Thank you.
With your report, could you just make sure we get a copy of it emailed to us? I think you probably provided it and we didn't get the packet.
Okay, I'm sorry, I will get that to you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I should have asked any questions for PTO? Moving on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for everyone, you guys are fabulous.
And just so everybody knows, the reason we ask for the 501(c)(3) and the insurance is in this way, if someone's writing a check or there's, you're renting you the facility or you know, you're using the facility and something happens, it's just a, it's a check back list we have to kind of go through. So I hope everybody understands, that's why the board asks for that every year.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks everyone. We were supposed to have the annual financial report this evening, but Dr. Smetana, we're moving that until December.
Yes, our auditor is sick tonight, so he will be at our December meeting instead.
So then we have FOIA requests.
We have two FOIA requests, one from Ethan Sal, which I think he's doing an internship with the village. So we received a few regarding different enrollment numbers and things of that nature. And then the other one was the ELEUM data, ELEUM, and that was just looking at our FOIA on all of our insurance costs and employee benefit costs.
So that's the Village of Riverside doing a, doing an assessment and there were some, just a breakdown by.
By each municipality, yes.
District goals update?
No questions were submitted, not much to report out in the last two weeks since we've seen this just in October, so I have nothing to share.
Any questions from anyone? Moving into additional discussion items, does anyone have any additional discussion items they want to add this evening?
If anybody wanted clarification on the resolutions, there were only five?
We, I think that's later on the agenda.
Later on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, got it. Reports, there's no president's report, superintendent's report, Dr. Skinkis.
Library and cafeteria HVAC problem, this was supposed to be done in August, where commissioning is in progress now in November, we're hoping to have it wrapped up this month. Dr. Smetana and Bermer are working with our subcontractor, commissioning agent and our architect to get those things finalized. Update on the search for the assistant principal of athletics, we have a tentative timeline that's been sent out, an email went out to all the staff today to help, they can volunteer or if they're interested in possibly serving on the committee for that committee round, but we are hopeful that we can bring a candidate to the board in early January. The annual Veterans Day assembly occurred on Friday, November 10th. Again, our students were excellent, we had a huge turnout, Ms. Fletcher helped work with Dr. Freitas and his team to get that planned. And again, it's just a great event, the veterans are very appreciative of breakfast, our students were very well behaved and respectful, I'm sure in the all school assembly and I know they appreciated having veterans come to their individual classes to speak, so kudos to everybody that had a hand in that. Facilities advisory council, they met on November 9th, items discussed included solar panels, the culinary lab, Aramark's business review and updates on the landscaping and HVAC projects. Finance advisory council, a meeting occurred on November 9th, items discussed included the audit, the 2024 levy, enrollment and staffing projections, which will be covered by the building administration next month, purchase service contract tool updates and financing future capital projects such as solar and the culinary lab. And there is a new press plus packet, and so that's Ms. Gasko and Ms. Locke, and I will be working to get something scheduled with them before the December meeting so that we can provide any updates we have for the board. And that concludes the superintendent report.
Looking, no questions or comments? Dr. Smetana.
Good evening, tonight I'll provide the board with financial information through the month of October, which represents 33% of our fiscal year. Beginning on Board Book Page 216, you'll see the total operating revenue for the month was $1,514,243 with 43% coming from local fees, 18% coming from evidence-based funding, which is our state funding, and 15% coming from CBPRT. The total operating expenditures for the month were $2,224,496 with 84% towards salary and benefits, 4% for operations and maintenance, building level supplies and special education tuition each. On the next page, you'll see the summary of revenue shows that the district has received 11.5% of our budgeted revenue for the year. This percent is slightly higher than this time last year, but both this year and last year are anomalies due to the delay of the collection of property taxes. The summary of expenditures shows that the district has spent 36.8% of our budgeted expenditures, which is pretty similar to this time last year. The district will continue to deficit spend for the remainder of this month, November, due to the delay in property tax. We do anticipate receiving some money in November from escrow accounts, even though property taxes aren't due until December 1st, so we will not need to complete a working cash loan and we'll see an influx of revenue starting in November. As always, Ed provided the statement of revenues and expenditures for all of our board accounts for the month of October, as well as all of our activity accounts as well. Dr. Skinkis touched on in our facilities advisory council that we had Aramark present their client business review, which happens two times a year. After the council reviews it, I always provide it in the board packet, so you can review that at your leisure. I also want to thank Bermer, Gentti and the entire Aramark staff for a job well done. They work tirelessly, often behind the scenes, to make sure that our school is clean, our facilities are maintained and all of our special projects are completed. Our school would not look as wonderful as it does without, without them and they, like I said, are often behind the scenes and don't get the recognition that they deserve. So in addition to their report, I just wanted to thank them publicly for the work that they do. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Any questions or comments on the Aramark report or any of the financials from Dr. Smetana? The school does look good.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Moving on, Dr. Freitas.
Good evening, our board members. I know this is in new news and I know it's been around for a few weeks now, but RB is an exemplary school, being the top 10% in the state of Illinois. You know, our school's exemplary designation is the result of collaborative approaches in all we do. And it started with the mission you all created, be partners in the work you do. You know, I think of district office and our superintendent working with the union to create committees so we can lead together. Our teachers and support staff's relentless effort in helping all students to learn and grow while engaging in professional development, support and academic growth of English learners, our student participation in the Five Essentials survey, our historically high freshman on track rate and graduation rates, our rising participation in career and technical education due credit, dual enrollment, AP, and our assistant principals and directors, special education and deans on wavering building level leadership. RB is simply folks an amazing place, we're not perfect, we're striving towards it, but everybody here created the conditions for our school to be exemplary. So I'm thrilled and excited, it's the first day I found out and I'm still high on the exemplary today. But again, the board should be proud, everybody that works with RB should be proud and I'm just elated to say, you know, that we are an exemplary school. Under school culture and operations, we have Thanksgiving and Fall Break coming up next week, the 22nd through the 25th. On this November 29th, we have coffee with the principal at 9:00 AM in the staff cafe. On November 30th, we have college night for junior and parents, 6:00 PM in the little theater. Under activity and athletics, our really state renowned or I would say nationally renowned Thanksgiving basketball tournament, the Vandemarke, will start on the 22nd through the 25th. I believe we drew John Hancock High School in the first round on the 22nd. And under December, and I would address a question that was submitted by the Board of Education, our fast food completion night is scheduled to be on December 6th from 4:00 to 6:00 in the computer lab. Per law, the form must be released by the end of December, it could be released as early as December 1st. If for some reason it changes, our student services team and our counselors will email senior parents and seniors of a date change. But it's still officially in the books for this, we're hoping that the form is open on the 1st, but if it's not, our student services department will communicate with the relevant stakeholders. And that concludes my portion of the principal's report. I don't know if there are any questions, board members?
Congrats again on the exemplary, we met with RBA earlier, we talked about it, I think it's quite a, I think you captured it very well, it's quite an accolade and there's still more to strive for, but we appreciate that. Student advisors, please.
To begin our student advisor report, for teaching and learning, we have in the month of November, a second quarter reflection. We're halfway through second quarter with finals being held in six weeks for our month of November with teaching and learning.
Moving on to school culture and operations, for the month of November, November 8th, Mr. Venegas and his students attended Hamilton the Musical as part of a educational field trip. And then November 23rd, the marching band will be performing at the annual Thanksgiving parade in downtown Chicago and this is a kind of historic moment because this is the first time RB has been represented in that parade. And then in December, December 6th and 7th, as Vidi mentioned, is the music department's holiday concert that is at 7:00 PM in the auditorium and come out and support.
And then for activities and athletics in the month of November, on November 6th, winter sports officially began on Monday. Good luck to our boys and girls basketball, boys swimming and diving, girls gymnastics and boys and girls wrestling. I hope everybody has a good season.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we know what time the parade steps off on Thursday? It's early.
Yeah, I believe.
I do believe it is.
8:00 AM, okay.
8:00 AM.
Okay. That's earlier than maybe you expected.
I can hear it, is that?
Okay, thank you.
And congratulations, that's, that's great to be a part of, I know you were excited, so.
And they're bringing back the inflatables this year for the first time since 2019. So I think that's exciting about a Thanksgiving parade. They have the big balloons.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for principal, student advisors? No? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, approval of minutes. There were no questions submitted.
I'll proceed, the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on October 10th and 24th, 2023, open and closed as presented in the November 14th, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second, Ms. Locke?
Thank you.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Mr. Gasko?
Yes.
Slatt?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Zohr?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Yes. Under old business, do you want to bundle that, want to go life safety, capital improvement, sustainability, talk about the grant and then we can go on to IASB?
Sure. Life safety, obviously I talked about in my report with the commissioning, so we're hopefully getting that wrapped up by the end of the month. Dr. Smetana, you want to provide an update on the school maintenance grant since we had the facilities advisory where we landed?
Sure. Just to refresh everyone's memory, school maintenance grants are dollar-for-dollar grant program that will match up to $50,000 for the maintenance and upkeep of buildings and structures, as well as some capital improvement projects. After discussing the options with the facility and finance advisory councils, we have decided to recommend and submit the grant for the installation of solar panels on the roof. This is a state priority within the grant and at the December 12th board meeting, the district's energy consultant, Noni Energy, will review the solar panel feasibility study along with some options for the district. The earliest that this project would be completed, if approved by the board, would be summer of 2024. The district has two years from when the grant money is dispersed to spend the money, so if the board does decide to move forward with the solar panel project, we do not have to do it this summer, we do have some time. And worst case scenario, if we approve the grant tonight and ultimately the board decides not to move forward with solar panels, we would just give the state back the $50,000 that we would receive. We chose this project over the culinary space because this project may happen sooner and the state may offer the grant again next year, so then we'd be able to capitalize on the new grant and receive an extra $50,000 for the other project. So that's why we chose the solar panel project.
Do you need us to approve this tonight or we're waiting for the NARIA presentation?
Fortunately, it needs to be approved tonight because I have to submit it to the state by December 1st.
Okay. So questions, who has questions on this grant application? Anything? I mean, it's matching, it's for a good cause, I think, thank you for doing all the work behind the scenes to get the grant together, so.
This, Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the school maintenance project grant application as presented in the November 14th, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second from Mr. Novak.
Slatt?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Benner?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Mr. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Seles.
Yes. Okay.
So you want to go?
Thank you, I'll go back to the IASB.
Back to the resolutions?
It just made sense to do that.
Sure.
The solar panel under the sustainability capital project. IASB, the conference is this weekend, there are, as Laura was, was, is here as a resource, but there are five positions that they're looking for, Laura Ruska as our representative to take a position on. Does anyone have any opposition to the recommended positions that IASB has put forward?
And you know, it's always, Illinois Association of School Boards, it's always their position to give the most control to the local school boards. So, you know, they are, they are very good at not imposing a large city mentality on rural areas and the opposite, a rural mentality on, you know, large cities. And so, you know, in the first one, the industrial construction, they are very aware that there's some rural communities in southern Illinois where that just happens. There are some industrial parks that are closer to the school, it's just the way they are and they want to leave it up to local control to make those decisions and not make a blanket decision. The second, and that's why they recommended, don't adopt. They did say the school resource office funding, you know, they do recommend that we do advocate for monies where we have a strong tax base, but again, in many areas of Illinois, they don't. And so it would be in the best interest of the state to, every child in Illinois should feel safe at school. And if they don't have the same economic base that, you know, we enjoy, that, that shouldn't hinder them from feeling safe at school, until they are recommending that we, you know, support that one. On the board employee relationships, they felt that there were other entities that were already in place and that's why they're saying not to go through that one.
No, the third one is bus driver regulations, they recommend do adapt.
So I jumped ahead to the board, but the bus, the bus regulations, they are recommending that you do that because they're giving back some control again to the local communities. If you looked at the mileage in one of the downstate communities, it's in the thousands and because they've lost, it was 337,000 miles a year their bus drivers are driving. You know, they've lost some driving. You know, they've lost some drivers and with some different regulations kind of tied in with the trucking industry, and so they want to go back to some of the regulations we've had in the past, and again, give that control to the local school boards to meet the needs in their own communities and to resolve some of those issues. So, and then the last one was that employee history review. That's the one where Illinois Association of School Boards felt like there were other government entities in place that already addressed those issues, and so it just didn't need, an extra layer wasn't necessary.
So does anyone want to discuss these further, or do we want the board to take their board?
I'll voice, I'll voice one opposition to the, to the proposals, and that's on number two, the school resource officer funding. I do not agree, but for what that means in terms of what we as a board do, I'm not wedded to my.
I mean, we can certainly do an up or down vote on each of these individually. I would tend to agree with you. I don't agree with IASB's recommendation on that one. I mean, I'm looking to do a straw poll on that issue.
So is it we don't, we don't agree with advocating that the state should put some funding together for school districts who can't afford, that's what it's for?
That's not the way it was written, so I'm not disengaged. It's advocating funding for every district to receive money for that. I disagree.
Right, well, and it, when you go in there, it talks about, I think there's a.
I disagree. I'm not, I don't have to debate it. I'm not concerned.
So, so let's take, I'm the first one. Any, any IASB's recommendation, as Laura's indicated, is do not adopt. Any objection to that one?
I have no objection.
Do not adopt? Seeing none, so I think we're fine with the, the board being represented that way. On the second one, IASB's recommendation is do adopt. Does anyone agree with that? Well, I agree with that. Okay.
So we got one, let's just go in order.
Sorry, I disagree.
Disagree, Carolyn?
I agree.
Okay, 1-1.
Disagree.
2-1.
I disagree.
3-1.
Agree.
3-2?
I agree.
3-3? So Laura?
Well, I agree. Okay.
Put it down as agree.
Bus driver regulations, they recommend do adopt. Any objection with that position? No? Employment history review, they recommend do not adopt. I don't see any objections on that one, nor on the alternative safe school funding. They recommend do not adopt. Okay. So, so when Ms. Ruska is at the conference, she'll cast our votes aligned with IASB's recommendation ultimately. Yeah, thank you. Any other discussion on those? I know there's a number of people attending the conference. I hope it's productive. Moving on to new business, payment of bills.
Yeah, one question. Dr. Smetana, do you want to address the question regarding the, like the vouchers in regards to tournaments?
Oh, yes. So every, every time a new sport season is about to begin, we have to submit payments to the school districts for all the tournaments and invites that were participating prior to going to them for that season. So the requests that you saw in this round or for the upcoming winter season, they were not.
I guess I would just like to see.
2020, the year. Okay.
Because of the wrestling, is that what they were?
It was all of them. It was, some of them were, some of them weren't. It was so, it was like.
Is there a specific encoding reason we don't put the year in?
It just said 20, I think. It didn't say 2023.
We usually just enter what's on the check request, so we can make sure that that gets streamlined.
Okay.
Any other questions, though?
No, that was the only question submitted.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the payment of bills as presented in the November 14th, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
We have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Durkin.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Van Horst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Skinska?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Ms. Slack?
Yes.
Ms. Seles?
Yes. And then we do have a new press plus policy issued, but we are just looking at those this evening, and the committee will need to review them, and will, will we address these in December or January?
The goal is to try to get it to you in December, but with the holiday schedule, see if we can pull that off. I will be at Zoom meeting, but if I can't line up a date, then we'll have it to you by the January board meeting.
Okay. It was, it was a big packet, but there wasn't anything, I think, hopefully the committee will be able to get through those. Moving on to the proposed estimated 2023 tax levy, Dr. Smetana?
This is a first read of the proposed estimated tax levy that must be filed by December 26th. It was reviewed with the Finance Advisory Council on December 9th. The proposal is to approve a levy increase of 6.5% in order to capture the maximum amount of taxes on any new property. Since the Consumer Price Index for the year 2022 is greater than 5%, we are capped by 5%, but the reason we ask for more is to capture that additional percent and a half on new property. The county will reduce our levy based upon CPI and their tax cap once they receive it. For those of you that are looking at a levy for the first time, the important columns to look at are shaded in gray, and I'll review that in detail at the December board meeting when we have our official tax levy hearing.
No questions were submitted at this time. President Seles?
Thank you, and we will have the hearing in December and hopefully move forward with adoption in December.
Yes, so the board will need to adopt it in December. It's due before the last day of December in order for us to get our tax dollars in the spring. So if you have any questions from now until December, please submit those, and Kristen and I can get back with you.
Good point. Thank you. Overnight field trips for 23, 24, and the 24, 25 school years.
Dr. Freitas, and I know there was a question submitted, I believe, about baseball.
Yeah, so varsity baseball in the spring and March, they're planning, I'm going to Jacksonville, Illinois. It's a little warmer there, you know, the field conditions are better, and the total cost of the trip is 200 per student. The question was if we could have a breakdown. Our head varsity coach is actually currently on paternity leave, I believe. His wife gave birth to a wonderful baby girl, Antonella, this morning. The minute he's back, we will have an amendment to adjust those costs, you know, room and board transportation. We'll have that breakdown available. M.A.R.D.U.N. in mid, early February, they'll be going to the M.A.R.D. United Nation at the University of Chicago as you have students, you know, all over the state that are interested in politics, kind of relive critical moments of world diplomacy, you know, what was it like, you know, before a country declared war on another, before a prime minister made this, they kind of relive those experiences. So that's in February, and then the music department is planning to go to New York in 2025. So in a brief, this is the first read, doesn't have to be approved today, and none of them are in a rush, but I do ask that in December, you know, if there are any questions they're asking, if we could approve them at the next board meeting. I do ask that.
So, and this does tie back to what we heard from the music and theater sponsors earlier, giving people sufficient time for fundraising.
You know, it's almost twofold. One thing is to give time for fundraising, but also there were some hopes to increase excitement, to be a part of the music department so that you could attend this trip.
Hopefully, they share that with the rising eighth graders, right? Because they could go.
That's the plan.
Or the rising freshmen, I guess, graduating eighth graders. Good idea. So questions need to be submitted, and we'll have to approve in December. Thank you. Visitor statements? Looking to come up? Any, no discussion items were requested? Are there any matters for consideration at future, future meetings for many of the board members? Looking, looking. And matters for closed session?